Okay, my camera is on mute now mute, so it's seven o'clock, I'm gonna start the public meeting. The meeting will come to order. Good evening, everybody. This is a City of Tiger Planning Commission Public Meeting. And today is May 3, 2021. Doring, can we have a roll call, please?
President who?
Here.
Vice President Jackson.
Present.
Commissioner Brooke. Alternate Commissioner Dick. Alternate Commissioner Miranda.
Here.
Commissioner Quinones.
Here.
Commissioner Roberts.
Here.
Commissioner Shook. Commissioner Kasevan.
Here.
Commissioner Watson.
Here.
Commissioner Whitehurst.
Present.
Thank you.
Thank you, Doring. Before we start, I've been asked to clarify that on our public meeting website, we may have listed a public testimony calling time incorrectly. So for the first public hearing, calling times between 7:15 and 7:30, that's the Washington Square Regional Center hearing. And for the Fennel Creek Trail hearing, the calling times 8:15 to 8:45. And the public calling number is 503-966-4101, 503-966-4101. All right, thank you. The next is communication commissioners. Have you attended meetings or you have any communication you want to share with the commission? I see. I see none. Okay, Susan or Lena, oh wait, Monica, I think you started sharing your presentation already. There we go, thank you. So next item is considered, so I didn't see anybody wanting to share any communications. So let's go on to the next item on the agenda is consideration of minutes. So commissioners, do you have any correction, deletion, or addition to the minutes that Doring shared with us?
This is Commissioner Watson, and I sent an email with revisions to the last set of minutes that were out.
Yes, and have you received a reply, received a reply from Doring?
Um, no, I don't believe so.
Okay.
I emailed you a reply, Commissioner Watson, I can resend it, maybe nothing happened.
You may have gone into my junk mail, which would be an interesting.
Did you want to just address that, President who?
If you want to rather wait until the next time, we can, we can wait to approve the minute until the next meeting.
Okay, we'll do that.
Okay. All right, so let's go on to our public meeting, public hearing, and the first one, let's start. The first, our first public meeting, which is on Washington Square Regional Center Sub District Modification DCA 2021-0001. And this is a development code amendment that is proposed to modify the location and size of the sub district that allows motor vehicle sales rental in the WSRC Plan District. This amendment approved will reduce the overall sub district size, and you will restrict location, and you will also require all vehicle sale and rental inventory and vehicle services areas to be contained inside a building unless exempted. So before I start, since this is a amendment, a co amendment that will only affect limited area and business, for the sake of transparency, commissioners, I will ask you if you have any conflict interests to declare, please raise your hand. Okay, I see none, so I guess nobody owns a dealership here, that's good. So since this is a legislative hearing, I will, we will jump right into the staff member presentation of the staff report. And I would like to introduce Assistant Planner Lena Smith and Senior Planner Susan Shanks for the presentation. Lena and Susan, good evening.
Good evening commissioners, I'm Lena Smith, I'm an assistant planner in the Community Development Department. Tonight, along with Assistant Community Development Director Tom McGuire and Senior Planner Susan Shanks, I'll be presenting on the Washington Square Sub District Modification Project, a proposed development code amendment. I will share my screen. So before I get started, I'd like to acknowledge that city staff sent a memo to all the commissioners last week with revisions to the proposal. So for the first half of this presentation, I'll focus on the original version of the proposal as it went out on the public notice in late March and early April. And then Susan will go into more detail about the revised version of the proposal in the second half of the presentation. So to start off, we are located in the Washington Square Plan District. We are at the intersection of Highway 217 and Shoals Ferry Road. The Plan District currently contains a sub district that allows standalone motor vehicle sales rental uses on certain properties in the mixed use commercial or MUC zone. So all the properties we'll be discussing tonight are located in the MUC zone. Just to point out some key properties, as you can see here, is the Washington Square Mall property. We have the Jaguar Land Rover dealership off of Greenberg Road. Here's Highway 217, and then some key properties off Cascade Avenue that we'll be discussing tonight. So the project purpose of the sub district modification is to allow standalone car dealerships to locate in car oriented areas that do not have the potential for pedestrian oriented development. The other purpose is to minimize visual impacts of car dealerships and promote the efficient use of land by requiring new car dealerships to forego the traditional surface parking lot for vehicle storage and consider other more modern approaches to vehicle sales. As shown on this map, the current sub district is shown in blue, and it's restricted to the Washington Square Mall properties. The original proposal is to reduce the overall size of the sub district by about 80 acres. This results in motor vehicle sales rental uses being allowed on one property on the east side of Highway 217. This is the Jaguar Land Rover property off of Greenberg Road, and five properties west of Highway 217 on Cascade Avenue. The other part of the original proposal is to add a new screening requirement for all vehicle inventory and service areas to be contained inside of a building. As you can see, the code currently does have a screening standard for a mix of opaque screens and evergreen landscaping. But the intent of the new screening standard is to be more permanent and to be more clear and objective. Just to provide some more details about this project, the proposal would prevent more standalone car dealerships from locating on the Washington Square Mall property. Market and development feasibility analysis shows that the mall property has significant redevelopment potential for dense, walkable, and transit oriented development. A great example of this is the Sears redevelopment project that was approved by Planning Commission last summer. The same market and feasibility analysis also shows that the properties along Cascade Avenue do not have the same redevelopment potential. This is due to multiple reasons such as change in market conditions, for example, a reduced demand for brick and mortar retail, the proximity of the properties to Highway 217, as well as access barriers created by the railroad on the west side, Highway 217 on the east side, and Shoals Ferry Road to the north. And there is also a lack of pedestrian and bicycle amenities in this area. The sub district modification will also advance the city's economic development goals. Car dealerships contribute positively to the local economy by employing workers at a range of salaries and by employing more people than other sales oriented businesses. For example, for example, Holman Automotive Group, who I'll be discussing more on the next slide, proposes a new BMW dealership on the Orchard Hardware site. Their initial estimates show they would employ about 28 employees per acre. Bob Lanfear's Motorcycles, which Susan will discuss more later on in the presentation, proposes to expand their dealership into the Office Depot Building. And the expanded business would employ about 20 employees per acre. For comparison, Toys R Us and Orchard Hardware employed between six to 14 employees per acre. So we are seeing an increase in employment numbers from initial estimates based on the previous uses to the proposed uses. The proposed car dealership locations will also be located further away from existing residential areas. And the proposal would help facilitate redevelopment of underutilized or vacant properties along Cascade, such as the Toys R Us and Orchard Hardware sites, which have been vacant for some time. The sub district modification proposed by this legislative project is an offshoot from the Washington Square Long Range Planning Project that Susan has been working on. This legislative project is being proposed separately and at this time to accommodate a standalone car dealership that desires to locate on Cascade Avenue. As I previously mentioned, Holman Auto Group proposes a new BMW dealership on the former Orchard Hardware site. And they shared their initial concept and design with us, as you can see on the screen. I just wanted to point out with their design, they are showing that all vehicle inventory and service areas are proposed to be contained indoors, so they would be meeting the proposed new indoor screening standard. City staff has been coordinating with Holman on this legislative project, and we have also seen interest in this proposal from other car dealerships. City staff also felt far enough in the long range planning process, and also based on the feedback that we've received so far, we felt comfortable presenting the proposal at this time. So now I will hand it off to Susan.
Thank you, Lena. So hello, planning commissioners and President who. It's a pleasure to be there here this evening. So as Lena mentioned, I'm the project manager for the Washington Square Regional Center Update Project. So this project has been going on for about a year now, and I've, I've briefed the Planning Commission as well as the City Council a number of times on this project and kind of gave you a heads up about this proposal coming earlier than other proposals that we'll be making at the end of this project. But I, what I'm going to be doing here this evening in the next several slides is just to be sharing the relevant pieces of information that we have gathered from this long range planning project that support this proposal before you today or this evening. So, and actually Lena, if, well, actually, that's fine, stay on this slide. Sorry, Lena has control of the slides now, so we'll try, we'll try to stay coordinated on this. But in any case, I just want to read a couple of things that Lena has said. We definitely, we are making this proposal at this time because we are being responsive to a stakeholders timeline. However, just to be really clear, we are making this proposal because we think it's a good proposal. And it just so happens to be that we're willing to do it earlier because we think it's in the cities and the public's benefit to do it now. And so I just wanted to be really clear about that. And as I was saying before, about the long range, long range planning project that I've been working on, this project really does support this proposal in a number of different ways. So in terms of sharing some relevant pieces of information, this might be an image that you're familiar with if you went to the online open house or if you were present for my last briefing to the Planning Commission. But I wanted to share it again to help any members of the public who might be watching. But from our long range planning project, one of the things we did is that we mapped out what the vision for the Washington Square Regional Center area looked like from 20 years ago. And that was the last time that this area was planned for. And so there's a lot of things that you're looking at right now, but I wanted you to focus on one thing in particular to help you understand how it relates to the proposal that's at hand tonight. So look at the blue area on the very left hand side of your screen. Thank you, Lena. And on the right hand side of that blue area, that's the heavy rail tracks that also carries the West commuter rail train. And then you'll see that the blue changes to pink or red on the other side of the railroad tracks, and that that red pink area actually sits on both sides of Highway 217. So it actually is over the wall, sorry, the mall property on the east side of 217. And it's also over the properties that are served by Cascade Avenue on the west side of 217. And so this was something that the original vision for this area included the community and the decision makers at the time believed that the Cascade area and the mall area share a lot in common and that they should kind of share the same vision, which was for very tall, dense pedestrian oriented development. What we have learned in our recent analysis and also in reaching out to the community is that that's not what we've seen happen in this area in the past 20 years. And it's also not what we don't, we don't expect to see this happen, especially on the west side of 217. That the various analysis that we've done, market analysis and feasibility analysis, as well as reaching out to the community, has really shown us that the area west of 217 is in fact very different than those properties that are on the other side of 217. So around the mall and Greenberg Road. And if you can maybe just point out Greenberg Road on this vision, yeah, there you go. So Greenberg Road is there, goes all the way up to Hall Boulevard, and then of course, 217 runs down the middle. And, and just to point out one other thing, the yellow bridges that you see with the dashed lines that kind of span the, the pink areas, those were proposed 20 years ago, but they have not actually ever been built. But I don't necessarily want to get into that. I want you to focus on the blue area. So Lena, if you wouldn't mind switching back and forth between the next slide and this slide so people can see the difference in how the blue area changes. So just notice how the blue area changes and how the pink area changes, particularly around 217, which is that big white line down the middle. So stay there for now, for, yeah, thank you, Lena. So stay there now for a bit, Lena. So what we're actually proposing in the long range planning project and that we've actually just had an open house about for the community over the past month is in recognition that we, we believe that the, the area that served by Cascade Avenue, which is the area between the railroad tracks and Highway 217, that that area in there is more similar to the area on the other side of the railroad tracks, so the Nimbus area, than it is to the mall area, which is still shown in pink. And so that was one of our first things that we kind of realized early on in the analysis that we were doing for this project. And then we also have been working with some urban designers as well, and some transportation planning folks. And one of the things we also realize is that, you know, the access issues, particularly for the area along Cascade, are particularly problematic because of all the barriers, both with the heavy rail and the large roads, Shoals Ferry Road, as well as Highway 217, that that creates a really different environment over here, and particularly on Shoals Ferry Road as it crosses Highway 217. Because of the angle at which it crosses, and Lena, if you could just highlight kind of Shoals Ferry Road where it crosses Highway 217. It's a little bit down farther, sorry, there, that's highway, so that's the interchange there. And so the angle at which Highway 217 and Shoals Ferry Road travels to the north as it crosses 217, it creates this really long area, and we can show this to you in an aerial view in a little bit, creates this very long area that is really hostile to pedestrians. There's just no way that there's going to be any pedestrian development along that front. In, in some respects, because that whole swath of land in there is under ODOT authority. It include, it's inclusive of Cascade Avenue, Shoals Ferry Road, and the highway. So it's this real wide swath of right of way that has all these major roads moving through it, where no development is going to be happening. And so that was the other reason that we basically came to the conclusion, and also hearing from different auto dealerships that were really wanting to locate in the vacant retail buildings right near Shoals Ferry Road and Cascade, that we realized that, that this was a good location for car dealerships because they are regional use, they draw regional customers. And this was actually a location that was kind of more out of the way, further away from residential areas, better access to Highway 217. You know, that's in part also why Jaguar Land Rover located on the other side of Highway 217 at Greenberg in 217. So that's why we're coming forward with this proposal. We feel like this is the right location. And also just to clarify one other thing, this is just including a use to the existing uses that are already allowed, it's just adding one more use. It's not taking away any of the other uses that are currently allowed in this area. And when my long range planning project wraps up, we will probably be suggesting more changes to the zoning in this area, again, mostly around the, the blue piece that you're seeing now, but that's, you know, further in the future. But for right now, all we're proposing is to add a single new use to be an allowed use in this area. So next slide, please. So for the long range planning project that we currently have underway, and like I said, it's been underway for about a year. And just by the way, we had car dealerships contacting us a year ago, asking about the Toys R Us and Orchard Supply, you know, vacant buildings way back then. And what we told those dealerships early on, and BMW Holman can testify to this, I believe they might be on the call tonight, Tesla can testify to this, although I don't think that they're on this call. But they contacted us a year ago when we were just getting this project off the ground. And we told them that we were not yet even ready to consider proposing any kind of changes to this area specifically to the Toys R Us or Orchard Supply stores that we had not yet, we just kicked off this long range planning project. We were going to look at those areas, but we weren't ready yet, and it would be disingenuous to start a long range planning project, to do all this outreach to the community if we'd already like kind of made up our minds and did some changes right beginning. So we basically held them off for quite some time, for about nine months. And then finally, we again had done enough analysis, we'd done enough of community outreach, as Lena mentioned, that we felt like we finally got to the place in the long range planning project to be comfortable to say, you know what? It does make sense to allow car dealerships in certain locations in the regional center. And so we just recently had a huge public outreach effort. We did an online open house for the whole month of April, it just wrapped up. We had great success, we had about 230 responses to the online open house. We reached out, sent flyers to about 6,500 residents, about 1,000 businesses. We sent them in both English and Spanish, we had the online open house, both in English and Spanish. We talked to our stakeholder working group, which is the SWG in this slide. We held focus groups, actually facilitated by our stakeholder working group members, one in Swahili and one in Spanish. We reached out to interested parties by email, and I have about 70, 70 interested parties on the project list right now. And we also did some promotion, a fair amount of promotion through social media. So after all that, next slide, please. We learned that people are generally supportive of allowing car dealerships, but limiting them to locations where there is not a great potential for pedestrian oriented development. So you can see in this slide here, with the purple representing the majority of the responses, the orangish yellow color being people that were neutral, that could be interpreted many different ways. And then about, I think the exact number is about 14% of folks who responded to this question, and we had 228 responses to this question specifically. About 14% of those folks didn't like this proposal, but like I said, it looks like the majority of folks did. The actual numbers are 63% like it, 23% were neutral, and 14% did not like this proposal. Next slide, please. And so in the course of then preparing this proposal and bringing it forward to the Planning Commission for a recommendation to City Council, we have heard from a number of folks about the proposal. So just to list off the folks here, so you know, because you might be hearing from them in their testimony later on this evening. Steve Pfeifer, he represents Jaguar Land Rover, so they're the existing car, car dealership that just recently developed at Greenberg Road and Highway 217. Tim Brunner, he represents Bob Lanfear's Motorcycle, he's an architect. Jacob Knutson, he's with Washington Square Mall. And Michael Robinson and Steve Presson, and they're with BMW Holman. You might, like I said, hear from some of these folks later on this evening. One of the things that we would respectfully ask the Planning Commission is, after you hear all the testimony, we would ask that, that you give staff the opportunity to respond to that testimony before you begin your deliberations. But what I want to say here is that in talking to all these different folks, and you know, we're, we still, we always learn from our stakeholders, from our property owners, from our, our business constituents. And we're always, I mean, I can speak for myself, I think we're always open to learning and to really hearing what it's like for different businesses to do business in the city, but also in the state or just in the region. And so as a result of various conversations with folks, that's why we've actually brought for, brought forth a revision to the original proposal we made because we thought some of the comments that we did get made a lot of sense, and so we wanted to reflect that in the proposal that we brought you tonight. We heard some, you know, comments or concerns from other folks, and even from some of the folks listed here. And they might be raising or requesting you to, or they might be proposing something else than what we're proposing. So it's not that we just basically changed the proposal to respond to everything that has been, that has been discussed with us. But we feel like we are, we have revised the proposal in such a way as to balance kind of the various competing interests here, balancing kind of the public's interests in allowing car dealerships in certain locations, particularly away from residential areas, but also in these areas that are not, don't have as much potential to develop with pedestrian oriented development. So we want to honor, you know, what we've been talking about with the public and what they've told us, they think is appropriate. And we also want to honor our business community members and, you know, our economic development goals. So we're trying to balance out those competing interests, and that's the proposal that we put forward in the, the memo that Lena spoke about that we, we sent you last week. And so, next slide, please. And so in terms of what staff's recommendation this evening is, is that we, we basically would, we recommended the Planning Commission to make a recommendation to City Council to support the revised recommendation, the revised proposal, I should say. And, and what that did specifically was exclude Jaguar Land Rover, which is a existing motor vehicle sales and rental operation that developed just a couple of years ago as a conforming use at Greenberg Road and Highway 217 interchange under the screening standards that are currently in place. And in conversations with them, they were very concerned about being made nonconforming in that one particular regard with regard to the screening standards. And in listening to their concerns, we agreed with them that it would be appropriate for them to continue to meet that standard and not to be subject to the new standard, which would make them nonconforming. And their representative, if he's here tonight, can actually go into more detail about that. But we thought that was an appropriate change, given that they just recently developed. The other thing that we, the other way that we revised the proposal is to change the sub district boundary a little bit more. We heard from both Bob Lanfear's Motorcycles, which is further to the south on Cascade, as well as the Washington Square Mall owner. And we agreed with them that there were certain sites that were appropriate to add to the boundary that expanded it a little, but still, you know, shrunk the overall size of the sub district. And we feel that, actually, if you go to the next slide, I think it'll be clearer. Actually, if you go, so this is the new language, sorry, that we're suggesting that came in your memo. And basically, this is the language that just excludes Jaguar Land Rover. And basically, this is the language that just excludes Jaguar Land Rover uh, from the new screening standard. So that's all that that new language does. And then the next slide. And then this is the revised sub-district location and size. So what we've done here that's different from the slide Lena originally showed you is that there are several properties um, that are added to the southern edge. There you go. She's kind of circling them for you. Um, and Bob Lamphier's Motorcycles uh, is that triangular property right there. Um, and then the, the other property that was added is um, on the, yeah, the mall property. This is a, a current Wells Fargo site. And we really felt it was appropriate to add these sites after having these conversations with these property owners and, and representatives. Because they met the same criteria as the other sites on Cascade in that uh, their adjacency to um, the interchange, the Highway two seventeen interchange. Particularly at Shoals Ferry um, and um, for the Wells Fargo site, there's actually, if you um, look at the transportation network through there. If you're using two seventeen and these kinds of uses, you know, do draw a regional customer. So not that they would all come on two seventeen, but you know, definitely many would. That um, there's like kind of a back door into that um, the Wells Fargo site. You know, can you point that out, Lena? Yeah, there's actually a back door um, right off of two seventeen that makes that really easy to access from two seventeen. Uh, obviously, clearly, like I said, not everybody's going to use that exact um, route to get there. But um, both coming north and south on two seventeen, that site has very similar properties to the sites on Cascade Avenue. Um, on the west side of two seventeen in terms of its proximity to that Highway two seventeen and Shoals Ferry interchange. Uh, so there's not a lot of pedestrian oriented development. It's kind of further to the north of the main mall property. Uh, so we thought that was an appropriate location to add. And similarly, in talking to uh, Bob Lamphier's Motorcycles, who is currently a non-conforming use in this district. And they've been around a long time. They're a successful business. And um, we thought it was appropriate to add those southern properties as well for the same reasons. So go to the next slide. So these are the reasons on the right-hand side are pretty much the exact same ones as um, what Lena outlined for the original proposal. And so this is staff recommendations for staffs, sorry, staff's recommendation for the revised proposal. So the properties that are outlined in black are the um, the, the properties that we're proposing to uh, have in the sub-district. Uh, inclusive of the Jaguar Land Rover site, which uh, is being pointed to with the blue arrow. Yep, right there, because obviously that's an existing uh, new dealership. Next slide, please. Uh, this is just a blow up to help you kind of see and understand uh, in terms of an aerial photo view. Uh, Shoals Ferry Road is the, the road that, yeah, really kind of almost hugs two seventeen for a while there. And again, it's the nature of how Shoals Ferry Road interacts with two seventeen there that makes it a long stretch of just, you know, not great conditions for pedestrians. So again, that's why I really feel this is not a really great pedestrian oriented area, area. So which is why we feel like it's appropriate for a car oriented use, like a car dealership. Next slide. And then a blow up just of an aerial view of where um, the other properties are located and calling out where Bob Lamphier's Beaverton Motorcycles is located. Uh, the reason why we include the property south of that is because they indicated that they have been interested in expanding into that location, but they can't. They can't under the current regulations, like, you know, just completely, it's a, it's a non-starter. And then uh, just to the right-hand side of that southern property. So that's a, an existing storage, like mini storage facility. And in uh, in at, in thinking about adding the um, the Bob Lamphier's existing dealership, as well as the, the underutilized and actually currently vacant building to the south. Which is an old Office Depot um, slash old warehouse. That, that storage facility, I mean, it may not redevelop. Obviously, this proposal doesn't make anybody redevelop. It's just allows the opportunity for these uses to come in. If, you know, the property owner and/or a car dealership wants to move in, but these properties can also redevelop in other ways as well. Um, this doesn't necessarily make all these, turn all these properties into car dealerships. But the storage facility we thought was a, a potentially a great redevelopment opportunity to add. It might not redevelop, but it's really um, it doesn't have frontage on any real street. Uh, it's actually tucked right up against Highway two seventeen. It sits back behind uh, the property that fronts Cascade Avenue, which is the Office Depot building. So uh, if uh, that property or owner wanted to redevelop, um, that actually is another great location for a car dealership to be tucked away. And not have any kind of uh, or very little impact on the surrounding community. So that is why we kind of added those uh, southern sites along Cascade to the proposal. Next slide, please. So I'm going to pass it back to Lena to wrap it up and then um, we'll entertain any questions you might have. Lena, thank you, by the way, for running the slides.
Yeah, thank you, Susan. So um, as outlined in the memo that was sent to Planning Commission, uh, staff recommends that Planning Commission recommend. Approval of the proposed Development Code Amendment with the revisions that Susan went over and that are outlined in the memorandum. So that recommendation to city council. And then for decision alternatives, um, Planning Commission could choose to recommend approval to council with no changes. Meaning um, uh, recommend approval to council the way, with the staff revisions. Recommend approval to council with minor changes. Or uh, choose to continue the hearing to a date certain to consider public comments or major changes. And, and we're happy to answer any questions. And, and as Susan said, um, we will be receiving some public testimony uh, with the phone calls. Uh, so staff does respectfully request the opportunity to respond to tonight's public testimony after everyone has testified. But before the commission begins its deliberations.
Thank you, Lena, and thank you, Susan. So before I ask the commissioner if they have any questions, just wanted to quickly remind uh, the public that you can call in at five zero three nine six six four one zero one. Five zero three nine six six four one zero one. So just quickly, um, the slide says the memo is dated May third, but the memo I have is dated April twenty ninth. So is, I just want to confirm, it's April twenty ninth.
Yes, sorry, yes. That's correct. It's the April twenty ninth memo.
We, yeah, we got ahead of ourselves.
All right, thank you. So let me go to the commissioner. Commissioners, do you have any questions for Lena or Susan? Please raise your hand. Um, Commissioner Miranda, please go ahead.
Yes, um, thank you. I was wondering if uh, it was intentional to exclude uh, the Paradise Harley Davidson property. And uh, the Ewing um, property just south of, of the ones that you've chosen. Since Harley is. Similar. Just that, why not go all the way down the street?
Yes, that's a great question. Um, so, and Lena, would you mind bringing back up um, an aerial photo, maybe just the, the, yeah, they, perfect, perfect. So great question. Um, yes, it was intentional. So one of the reasons why we initially um, proposed not to even include everything along Cascade Avenue. Which eventually intersects with Greenberg down at the southern end. And can you point that out, Lena? I don't know. Yeah, there you go. So Cascade Avenue kind of wiggles its way and then it um, actually joins Greenberg Road and maybe point out Greenberg Road. Yeah. And one other thing I'd like you to point out, Lena, just for context to help answer this question. Began Park, which is going to be developed um, in the next few years by the city. Yeah, it's like pretty much that green swath around Ash Creek, right there. Actually, it's the whole green swath between two seventeen. Yeah, there you go. So Ash Creek is right in there and the city has been able to acquire um, a lot of that property in there. And there's enough flat area on the north side of Ash Creek closer to Greenberg Road, which they're going to, we're going to be able to turn into a park. So just, that's all to provide some context is the reason why we didn't bring this sub-district proposal all the way down to Greenberg Road. We feel that there still is potential for um, some pedestrian oriented uses um, in this southern area. Cascade Avenue has development on both sides of the street at that point. Unlike uh, further north, Cascade actually wiggles and then parallels two seventeen. And yeah, right there, it parallels two seventeen. So there's only development on one side of the street. And that's another reason why it's just not a really good pedestrian location. Uh, that it, it's just so constrained. It's got a street on one side and then a highway and then the railroad on the other. But as it moves to the south, it kind of opens up and there's more land and there's development on both sides. There's actually um, even some of the development that's there now is much more pedestrian oriented, um, even currently. Like the, the Harley Davidson dealership. Just it happens to be the nature of their particular model, but they really don't have, everything's inside the building right now. It's um, it's, it's more pedestrian oriented and kind of the kind of thing that we want to see with all of our car dealerships, whether it's motorcycles or cars or whatnot. So we, we did intentionally leave them out, um, because there is, and again, this is the long range vision. Greater potential for this area to uh, to be, to be more pedestrian oriented. And especially with the park development, there's residential areas just to the south there. So we want to maintain that possibility there. So that's why.
Thank you. Commissioner Jackson, please go ahead.
Uh, question related to the uh, Jaguar Land Rover part of the sub-district or proposed sub-district. I was just curious on the scale of uh, pedestrian oriented to non-pedestrian oriented, what would the city analysis rank that site as?
Um, that's an interesting question. So um, I mean, one of the reasons why they probably chose to locate there, although I, I can't speak for them um, personally. Is that it's so close to the interchange with Highway two seventeen. And the way that they sit on that site, I mean, they're right up against two seventeen. And um, and because they um, came in under the old standards, or I should say the current standards, that they were allowed to have their um, you know, there, some of their inventory, if not all, I'm not quite sure. But certainly some of their inventory in the more traditional suburban auto dealership style, which is on a surface parking lot. And the standards also allowed them to have um, that kind of even up like adjacent to Greenberg Road. But again, it's so, it's really kind of really close to the interchange. And honestly, that interchange area is not great for bikes and peds, which is not to say that we don't think that actually it could be better. It doesn't have the same um, length that the Shoals Ferry interchange has because of how Shoals Ferry kind of angles and hugs two seventeen. So um, while it's a great, I think, location for a car oriented development. And we do have higher hopes for Greenberg just overall on both sides of two seventeen. It's uh, it's, it, it's lower on the pedestrian oriented scale um, for sure than, you know, because it doesn't come up to the street. Uh, it's kind of in the, in the, if you even just look at an aerial view, I mean, it's really set back from the main Washington Square Mall Road where there are sidewalks. It's kind of like you have to go through a parking lot to get there. So while it's a lovely new development, it's still, it's uh, still fronting at like essentially a large parking lot as it's kind of front door, so to speak. So as a pedestrian, it's, it's uh, not optimal. But for buying a vehicle, it's a, it's a great location.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Commissioners, any questions? Tom, you have a comment? No? I guess not. Uh, Commissioner Roberts, please go ahead.
Sure. Thanks, very briefly. So if we go to the end of Cascade, I think you have like right angle blueprint. And a couple of buildings right on the edge of what you're saying will become a park. I'm wondering, will the park continue and to take those spaces also? Or do those buildings and businesses stay in place?
Oh yeah, those businesses stay in place. The city didn't acquire um, anything with any like business or building on it. It's just the, the green area that you see.
Got it. Thank you.
Yeah, you're welcome.
Thank you. Okay, so um, I have a question about the Wells Fargo property. You mentioned how undevelopable, undevelopable it is to the west, on the west side. But um, immediately to the north of that property is the apartment complex. It's pretty good size and it's a lot of people living there. And to the right, there's a walk uh, target, which is very walkable. And outside of the apartment complex, there's that, a bus stop with two bus lines. And in your future um, planning map, you show a map hub there. I think there's a, uh, I mean, a bus hub there. So there's already a bus hub there. So you are saying that you, you only want to put car dealership in area that's not pedestrian oriented. And move away from residential area. But that Wells Fargo Bank property, to me, seems like it's the complete opposite of that. So I, can you walk through your thinking process of taking that property out initially and then putting it back to the car dealership zone?
Oh, that's a very good question and some very great points that you just raised, President, who, uh, yes, you're absolutely correct. For those that didn't know that there is a lone apartment building just to the north of that Wells Fargo site. I remember when I first did a drive around in this area. So it's just immediately north of the site, Lena. Immediately north. It's long and skinny. Yep, that, that's it right there. There's about eighty-some units there. It's the only residential property um, kind of in that whole area. And you're right in pointing it out. You're absolutely right. Our statement um, about keeping it away from residential areas, uh, yeah, is maybe not um, perfectly accurate. We were more broadly referring to like the, the neighborhood over uh, further to the um, the east. But that's probably not fair of us, uh, because you're right, there is an apartment building right there. And in, in terms of your uh, point about the, I think you said transit hub, the transit center is actually located further to the south. Lena, do you know where the transit center is on this map? I can kind of walk you through it. Keep going to the right, to the right, to the right, no, to the right. And then go up. And right, so that's, so there's like a little, if you go a little bit to the left, just right below the target, right there, and go down. There you go. So um, this actually, this area, we've been talking to Triment and to the mall property owner, Maserich. Quite a bit about and just in general about redevelopment of that, the whole area in and around. All those parking lots that kind of wrap around J C Penney's. And so um, in talking uh, with both Triment and uh, Maserich. This is where future redevelopment into a much more pedestrian oriented, uh, walkable with a lot more residential. This, that's kind of more the area that, the direction that the mall would be going in the future. So um, not over to this area over up against two seventeen. Uh, because it's more central and in the middle and where there's a lot more surface parking lots that could be consolidated and redeveloped. Uh, whereas the Wells Fargo site, because they don't own the Maserich uh, owners, uh, they'd actually, the, the Macy's uh, property is right below the Wells Fargo. And that's not under the mall ownership. Uh, it's part of the mall, but um, I believe and hopefully if, if the mall is on this call, they can correct me if I'm getting this wrong. But they don't own the land or the building, although it's all connected as part of one building. But that's the nature of malls and property ownerships and it's complicated. But it's that parking lot area that wraps around the J C Penney that goes all the way out to Greenberg. That's where there's this huge potential, kind of like what happened down at the Sears redevelopment. For um, a whole different kind of development, whereas they don't have similar plans for that Wells Fargo, which is kind of more isolated um, and closer to two seventeen. So that was our thinking, but you make really good points. And certainly that could be, um, you know, obviously a point of deliberation for the planning commissioners.
Yeah, um, so since the, so the, so as I mentioned, the, the memorandum added back that Wells Fargo property to now allowing car dealership. Has any public notice been sent out since you adding back that Wells Fargo property or just?
No, yeah, no, we, we actually added, we also added the uh, properties to the south as part of the revised proposal. So um, because this is a legislative project, um, where there's different noticing standards. Um, and so when we um, go to, because and, and presumably if the Planning Commission makes a recommendation to city council tonight. When we send out future notices, it will include your recommendation. So um, just the noticing requires are, are different and um, and we actually um, technically, I mean, so this is a owned by the mall property. And we're, and they're fully aware that we've added this property um, to. um, to the proposal, uh, this evening.
Oh, my concern is more with the eighty residential units to the north now. They didn't know that their neighbor could be a car dealership one day.
Well, that's actually been true all along. I mean, because until we changed the code, this area is currently in the sub district.
I understand, but, um, when you made amendment and, and sent out public notice, you are removing it. So now you're adding it back. So I don't know, you know, what their thinking process is. When you first remove it, they may think, oh, cool, you know? I don't have to live, I don't have to live next to a car dealership anymore. I worry about that. And so that, so that eighty unit is, I, I look up, so, so I think a two unit there is renting for twelve hundred dollar. Is that considered affordable? Um, units or I really, I'm clueless to rental right now. Do you know?
I, I, I couldn't tell you. I mean, I generally have an idea. I would say probably, I would, I would, I would imagine that this would be considered affordable. But yeah, I know rents are, are, um, pretty high these days and it's hard to understand, but isn't, is not affordable. Um, but I couldn't say for sure. But also just one point of clarification, President Hu, for a legislative project, we're actually not, um, required to, like, it's not like a quasi judicial. We don't have to send notices to surrounding property owners. So they actually never got a first notice. Um, so there hasn't been a change as far as they're aware at all. Um, and so who we're, who we need to notify is the people whose property we're proposing a change to. And in this case, it would be the mall. Um, so it's just a different kind of noticing process and, and, um, but you're in going forward, um, you know, we try to, um, always over notice rather than under notice. Um, and certainly if the planning commissioners, uh, were wanting us to notify those residents, we, we totally would. And I think it's actually a fair point. Um, but they weren't notified of one thing and then we amended it and we didn't tell them, just to, just to be clear.
Okay. I don't know if that made me feel better, but.
I know, I'm sorry, just, yeah, just being honest.
Uh, thank you. Commissioner Roberts, please go ahead.
I, uh, forgot to take my hand down after the last one.
Okay, sorry. Com- Commissioner Case seven, I see your hands up. Please go ahead.
So Susan and Lena, great presentation. Thank you. Uh, very informative. Clarification question. I might have missed it. In the new sub, subdivision that we are, we are creating, does that include the, the, um, retail area that's across from, uh, the Lampier motorcycle thing? Where there is that, uh, furniture store, et cetera? Is that included in the new one?
Yes, it is. Which again, it does not necessarily mean that they will re, redevelop as a car dealership. They could redevelop with any of the uses or they could not redevelop. They're a perfectly legitimate use there right now. So we just didn't want to like have this, um, disconnected sub district. Um, and given the kind of development that's there now with the huge parking lot in front, uh, it just gives them another opportunity to redevelop with a different kind of use, um, that hopefully in the future would not have like the large parking lot in front. You know, we want to kind of get away from that more suburban, uh, car oriented approach. But, um, they're fine as is. But yes, we included them to kind of have a contiguous sub district.
Okay. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Um, all right. So I don't see any more hands. So it's time for the public testimony section of the hearing. So before, um, Kealan, bring out the speakers, I mean, the callers. Uh, just want to remind everybody that speaker will be timed and limited to three minutes. Um, and the timing will begin after you have clearly state your name and address. And please spell your name for our secretary, please. So Kealan, please bring out our first caller.
Certainly the first caller is going to be Steve Piper.
Mr. Piper, please, uh, state your name and your address.
Good evening, members of the commission. I'm Steve Piper, P F E I F F E R. Address is eleven twenty Northwest Cooch, C O U C H, Portland, Oregon nine seven two oh four. And I'm here tonight as. Does the connection working? Just to confirm.
Yes, you, we can hear you. You have three minutes. Please go ahead.
Thank you. Uh, thank you, Chairman Hu, members of the commission. Um, I'm here tonight on behalf of Jaguar Land Rover. And some of you may have been on the commission when we initiated with staff back in early twenty seventeen, two, twenty seventeen, the concept of an auto dealer within this corridor or dealership. We initiated that text amendment and it was approved by the planning commission at the time or recommended and approved by the city council. We received our site development review approval. Then in fall of twenty eighteen, we broke ground on Christmas Eve. I'm sorry, we opened on Christmas Eve twenty nineteen. So the dealership has been up and running for about a little less than a year and a half now. And as Susan pointed out, the code was amended at the time to create the sub district to allow dealerships in the zone and it expressly included, um, in that small sub district, which included our site, a requirement for screening from adjacent right of ways to address the issue of, of views of exterior inventory, be it sales or service or any kind of vehicle on the outside of the building. The, and we were fine with that. We worked through that. We received site design review approval. And of course, an occupancy permit is having met that standard. And now we're at this location where, this point rather, where we would become nonconforming development, not a nonconforming use, but nonconforming development, even though we received that approval two years ago, less than, uh, and developed according to a very fresh standard, is addressing the visual screening requirement. It was not to be included within a building, but it was to be screened from the right of way with that exterior use allowed. If we had the current proposed standard in place at the time, whether we develop is an open question, but we would certainly develop differently. And you can see from the very handsome rendering from BMW, that it's a very different structure, site plan, layout, and more importantly, operation, if you build entirely within a building for a car dealer. We're not like, unlike any other retailer that has products for sale. They just tend to be a little more difficult to stash and store and display and be available for, for test drives in our case. So we support the proposed amendment from the twenty ninth, which is the revision from the original staff amendment to exempt just our site from that storage. We aren't proposing exemption from the requirement that all other development standards be met. And the primary reason for that is the nonconforming development status. It makes it difficult, especially, I'm sorry, how much is that?
Thirty seconds?
Oh, thank you. Um, the last point I'll make is the nonconforming development implications. On a refinance of a structure and a development of this nature, which is in the tens of millions of dollars, to refinance as commercial developments of this type often do, lenders look very askance at nonconforming development on a, on a refinancing. The reason is if there's a casualty loss, there's a discretionary call by the city, whether it could be built again the way it was originally built. That is something lenders and particularly their lawyers are very, very concerned about. And that's simply a risk that we can't afford to take, especially as recent as this development has been and how it was, again, structured from the beginning to meet the current standard. With that, I don't think any questions you might have.
Thank you. Commissioners, do you have any questions for Representative Jaguar Land Rover? Commissioner Jackson, please go ahead.
Hi, I was just curious if the, um, if it's really, really just the, the financing that's the, the concern over the nonconforming, uh, development? Or if there was additional development plans in the works that a, a nonconforming status would impede?
Oh, no, there's no, we're too fresh of development commissioner. We have no plans that, at least that I'm aware of, and I would have been advised of it, I'm sure, if we had any plans for expansion or the like. No, it's, it's really the nonconforming development status. It's kind of the anathema in a land use process to be that label, whether it be user developer. Um, and again, it's, it's the lending, in my experience, it's the lending complications, which can be very consequential. But it's not, it's not because we have plans to do anything.
Okay, thanks for the clarification.
You bet.
Thank you. Um, Mr. Piper, just a quick question. So the, the updated language in our, in the memo to April twenty ninth, it's, it strikes all the, um, screening requirement. But in your mind, even with that language, uh, land, uh, Jaguar Land Rover will still have to continue to comply with the current screening requirement. Do you agree with the screens and evergreen landscaping?
I agree completely. And those, that requirement, as you can see Chair, Chair Hu is, um, the rid, the cur, well, the current requirement as of tonight is a discretionary one. It's a broadly stated one. It says that we shall significantly reduce the viewer screen from the adjacent public rights away. That resulted in conditions of approval, which are very specific in the development, um, the site development review approval. So we not only have to continue, well, if you were to amend the code or the council were to amend the code, that standard would go away. Um, but we will be obliged to continue to comply with all of the conditions as well as the site plan that we presented to the city for site development review approval, which, all of which were designed to implement that current standard. Even if you amended, the conditions of approval on the SDR will remain in effect and we're going to have to meet those throughout the process.
Thank you. Just full disclosure, I, I got assurance from Susan of the same, but I just want to hear you saying that too. Okay, uh, so we, we don't have any question from Commissioner. So thank you, Mr. Piper. So Kealan, can we have the next caller, please?
Certainly. The next caller will be Michael Robinson.
Hello, Mr. Robinson. Please state your name, spell your name and your address. And you have thirty seconds after you clearly spell your name. Thank you.
Thirty seconds or three minutes?
I'm sorry, three minutes.
Okay. You might not want to hear any more lawyers tonight. Good evening, President Hu and members of the planning commission. My name is Michael Robinson. My last name is spelled R O B I N S O N. My mailing address is one two one one Southwest Fifth Avenue, Suite nineteen hundred, Portland, Oregon nine seven two oh four. I'm here tonight on behalf of Holman Automotive Group, which supports the legislative amendment proposed by staff to the planning commission. And by the way, we want to thank Tom, Susan and Lena for the excellent work they've done in bringing this amendment to the planning commission. Uh, we very much support it. Steve Preston with Holman Automotive Group will talk to the planning commission after I finish my testimony. As Lena told you, Holman purchased the former Orchard Supply and Hardware property in order to develop a new BMW dealership, which is only going to be allowed by this amendment. And that's why they support the amendment so much. And you've seen a rendering of those BMW dealership. Holman agrees with the staff report recommending that the planning commission recommend approval of the amendment to the Tigard City Council. Uh, we look carefully at the staff report. It complies, it demonstrates that all local and state laws are satisfied. The amendment, as both Lena and Susan said, is timely. It allows the revitalization of this part of Cascade Boulevard by adding the Washington Square Regional Plan District Subdistrict to this area, which allows freestanding auto dealerships as long as the inventory, the, the for sale vehicles and the service vehicles are enclosed in a building. The rendering demonstrates that Holman can easily meet that standard. Holman has a tight schedule to develop the property. We are very glad that the city is working with us on this. And so at the end of tonight's public hearing, President Hu, we would respectfully request that the planning commission recommend approval to the Tigard City Council, so that Holman has the opportunity to bring this new development with new jobs to Tigard. And we appreciate your time tonight, uh, both Steve and I and our traffic consultant, Chris Clomo, and my colleague in the land use department of Schwab, Wyonson and Wyatt, Garrett Stevenson are available to answer your questions. Thank you for your time tonight.
Thank you, Mr. Robinson. Commissioner, do we have any questions? I see none. Thank you very much, Mr. Robinson. Um, Kealan?
Yes, the next caller will be Steve Preston.
Steve Preston. Hi, Steve. Uh, please, uh, spell your last name and state your address. And you have three minutes after you've done that. Thank you.
Sure. Good evening, commissioners. My name is Steve Preston. It's P as in Paul, R E S S O N. My address is nine eleven Northeast Second Avenue in Fort Lauderdale, Florida. And, uh, we, uh, our group, uh, actually my title is Senior Advisor Real Estate and Construction. I'm the, I'm the guy that fa, found the Orchard, uh, property. And, and we actually were actively going after both Toys R Us and Orchard. Uh, we were, uh, the one that we, that we really wanted. And, uh, we, we put together what we think is a, a, a pretty outstanding plan. And based on the fact that, uh, our current BMW location in Beaverton, uh, we are extremely, uh, tight on space and we were needing to upgrade the facility to meet BMW requirements. And, uh, and just simply could not make it happen on, uh, on that property. So we felt very, very fortunate that we were able to come to, uh, to Tigard, find a, find a suitable piece of property. And, uh, I think our development, at least the, the rendering you saw, obviously there's going to be some things that, uh, they're going to, uh, going to change slightly with BMW's input. Uh, however, uh, the entire concept remains the same. Uh, all of our, all of our facility will be an indoor facility. Uh, we will have roughly two hundred and forty thousand square feet, uh, investing in excess of forty two million dollars. And, uh, and I think Lena already pointed out that, uh, that we're bringing roughly a hundred and fifty associates to the, uh, uh, to the facility. And our payroll is in the neighborhood of eleven point four to twelve million dollars a year. We, we're really, really proud of, uh, of our position in, uh, in Beaverton. And, uh, and if we're fortunate enough to get your approval to get to be in Tigard, it's a very successful business. And, uh, and Holman has been, uh, very, very fortunate to have a, a very good and strong relationship with BMW. We, uh, uh, we, we also are know, knowingly, we've got a, another issue coming up, uh, rather quickly. And this new facility allows us to handle, uh, the electrification issue because, uh, there will be a significant portion, percentage, probably in the neighborhood of twenty five to thirty five percent of BMW's fleet will be, uh, will be electric, uh, in the not too distant future. This gives us an opportunity to, uh, to prepare for that and, uh, and have the, uh, have the, the site and facilities to support that. So we, we feel pretty, uh, we feel really very confident and very fortunate that we've, uh, run into, to, uh, to this particular opportunity and look forward to, uh, to getting things moving with your approval.
Thank you. Commissioners, do we have any question for Mr. Preston? I see none. So thank you. Kealan, do we have another caller?
Yes, we do. We have, uh, next is going to be John Southgate.
Mr. Southgate, um, good evening. Please, uh, state your name and address and clearly spell your last name. And you have three minutes after you've done that. Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening, Chair Hu and members of the planning commission. My name is John Southgate, S O U T H G A T E. My location is one zero two zero Southwest Taylor Street, Suite four forty, Portland, nine seven two zero five. I'm representing Bennerston Development Company, a national real estate development and management firm with properties around the country. With me tonight, and I think immediately following my testimonies, Mr. James Boggioli, Director of Rights Build for the company. Bennerston owns the vacant property referred to several times tonight, uh, the former Toys R Us retail store at one zero zero six five Southwest Cascade Avenue. We appreciate the opportunity to be included in this initiative, expanding the range of uses to allow auto sales. We're particularly appreciative of your staff's recognition that the properties on the west side of two seventeen do not generally lend themselves to the type of higher density, mixed use development types originally envisioned for the Washington Square Regional Center. As I'll note in a moment, we look forward to participating in future discussions about the plan district that codify what we agree are dated thoughts about development in this sub area. Because of this pending zoning action, and this was referred to by your staff earlier, because of our site's prominent visibility, we have fielded substantial interest from, uh, several high end auto dealerships. In fact, we are pleased to be in negotiations with one such entity in the anticipation of city council approval of the code amendment, uh, before you this evening. Hopefully that will go through. Like, uh, what you heard with the other auto dealers, this will create new good paying jobs, new investment, generates increased property tax revenue, bring a long vacant building, property back to life. We're ready to turn the lights back on. I will note that the requirement that all vehicle inventory must be stored inside a building strikes us as limiting our design options for the site and affects the financial viability of some of those. viability of some of those options. Much of, uh, the inventory, um, under any scenario that we can imagine would indeed be indoors, but we anticipate our prospective tenants desire to have some of the vehicles outdoors, uh, such as for display. Of course, any such outdoor activities would be suitably screened and landscaped and subject to the city's design review process. Uh, I guess the point I really want to make is that automobile sales, especially for high-end, uh, vehicles, are not a one-size-fits-all situation. What might work for one auto type might not be as suitable for another. We appreciate your staff's rec- recognition that this area, this sub-area, is different in character from the mall itself, and that Subdistrict D does not lend itself against the sort of urban, walkable environment that you all aspire for the mall, which we share. Um, we agree with this characterization. The last main point I want to make is that we understand, as, uh, Susan alluded to earlier, uh, there are major legislative zoning studies underway that will acknowledge the reality of Subd- Subdistrict D, studies that may well make further modifications to the zoning for our property and other properties nearby. Uh, we gather these two legislative efforts, the Washington Square Plan District, as well as an examination of the city's industrial and employment zones, may result in substantive changes to allowed uses and development regulations for our property. We welcome this examination and look forward to being a part of that dialogue. With that, um, thank you for the opportunity to testify. I believe Mr. Boglioli will speak after me, but I'm happy to answer any questions in the meanwhile.
Thank you, Mr. Southgate. Commissioner, do we have any question for Mr. Southgate? I see none. Thank you, Mr. Southgate. Kealan?
Yes, we have, uh, James Boglioli next.
All right. So I have a problem with the pronunciation, the last name. So James, please go ahead and spell your last name and state your address, and you have thirty, three minutes after that.
Good evening. James Boglioli, five seventy Goer Avenue, Buffalo, New York. My last name is so, B O G L I O L I, and I am Development Director for Bennerston Development, as John mentioned. Um, I just wanted to introduce us, and, um, because we're new to the area. Um, Bennerston is a family-owned company. We started seven years ago by Nathan Bennerston, and we're currently run by his son, Randy. Um, we start, we're founded in Buffalo, and since that time, we have spread across the country. We're in over 40 states. We own over 45 million square feet of different developments, including retail, commercial, car dealerships, industrial housing, um, hotels and car washes. Um, we recently bought a package of vacant Babies R Us's and Toys R Us's on the west coast, two of which actually exist in Tigard. Um, one, the former Babies R Us are recently repurposed, um, in, for an AutoZone on Southwest Dartmouth Street, and, um, I believe that's under construction and may be open already. Um, we are looking forward to the redevelopment of the site. We are not a developer that flips properties. We hold on to them for a substantial number of time. We find high-quality tenants, and we will say that we have a lot of interest in, um, auto dealership for this site. So we are supportive of this. I do echo John's comments. Um, we do a lot of, um, auto dealerships. We're very few that are, or none, that don't have some sort of outside storage of vehicles. So it is a, um, different, different operational model than we're used to. But we are looking forward to working with the city on the redevelopment of the site, and I'm happy to answer any questions about Bennerston if you have them.
Thank you, Mr. Bo- Boglioli. Hopefully, I pronounced that right. Commissioner, do we have any? Commissioner, do we have any questions for the caller? I see none. Thank you so much. We'll go on to the next one. Kealan?
Next one is Tim Brunner.
Okay, Mr. Brunner, um, please, uh, spell your last name and, uh, stay your address, and you have three minutes after you have done that. Thank you.
Great. Thank you very much. My name is Tim Brunner. It's B R U N N E R. My address is one 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 zero four Southeast Stark Street, Portland, Oregon, nine seven two one six. I'd like to, uh, first of all, thank President Wu, the Planning Commission, city staff, and in particular Susan Shank and Gary Pagensucker to, uh, for their insight and openness in discussing this Washington Square Regional Center Subdistrict modification with me. Um, I'm an architect here in Portland. I've worked with Landfair Enterprises for over 20 years, and we specifically work on auto dealerships and this motorcycle dealership in particular. We have, um, we're very excited and supportive of this, uh, amendment, uh, that we're discussing tonight. You know, Bob Landfair Senior started, uh, the motorcycle dealership in 1974 and moved to Tigard in 1993. They've been in Tigard now for 28 years, and they employ, um, they employ, uh, about 50 employees. We're in a position right now where we're going to be able to, uh, possibly expand if this, uh, sub-district modification occurs. We'll be able to expand into two more, uh, brands on our site and be able to bring in, um, about 20 new family wage jobs. I wanted to point one thing out in particular that's important to note, um, that Susan mentioned earlier about the family wage jobs. These are, the jobs that were here, you know, per acre for current big-box retail are significantly less paying and not as dense per acre. The jobs that auto dealerships provide and our motorcycle dealership provide are family wage jobs and significantly higher density of jobs in this area. And it's really important to point that out. It's very important for the economic viability of the city Tigard and the community at whole. Um, we're very, um, thankful for this opportunity. I have worked on, with Bob Landfair for over 20 years, like I mentioned. On this particular property, we've tried multiple times to do expansions and renovations and have been unable to because of our legal non-conforming use. With this new use, uh, or with this approval for the sub-district modification, we'll be in allowed use outright, and we'll be able to make the appropriate and necessary changes and upgrades to our facilities. Part of those is by adding two more brands, we'll be able to expand a service function and retail parts function into the adjacent Office Depot property. And, um, that is a big deal for us because we'll be able to appropriately, uh, service the vehicles that we, uh, sell and, uh, have much better customer experience for sales, for parts, and for service. So we're, we're very excited about this opportunity. We're thankful because we've been battling this, uh, the code for over 20 years, and this really makes, uh, our use, um, the way it should have been in the, in the first place. And so we're, we're thankful for that. We're thankful for the city Tigard. We're thankful for the Planning Commission and City Council being open to consider this. I'll be happy to take any questions, uh, that you might have.
Thank you, Mr. Brunner, for your testimony. Commissioner, do we have any question for Mr. Brunner from Bob Landfair? I see none, so thank you very much. Kealan?
Next caller is, uh, Jacob Knudsen.
Mr. Knudsen, please, uh, state your name and spell your last name and your, and state your address, and you have three minutes after that. Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening, Commissioners. My name is Jacob Knudsen, K N U D S E N, and my address is three nine one five East Enrose Street, Mesa, Arizona, eight five two oh five. I am with Mace Rich, who is the owner of the Washington Square Mall. Um, Mace Rich is in agreement with staff's recommendation for the revised text amendment, which requires sales and rental inventory and service areas to be contained inside of a building, but we are opposed to the revised map included in the proposal. Uh, we would like to request that Planning Commission consider adding back in all of the Washington Square Mall property, as we currently have the right to in the existing sub-district today. We're all aware that retail and regional malls specifically are evolving. Uh, Mace Rich and city staff are aligned with future goals for Washington Square Regional District, and specifically the mall, which includes mixed-use gentrification and pedestrian-oriented development. This can be evidenced by our plans for the redevelopment of the vacant Sears box, which I'm sure many of you are aware of. That said, in order for Mace Rich to successfully continue to redevelop and properly keep our property relevant, we need to have flexibility to pursue many different types of uses as the market and demand dictates. We are going in the wrong direction by shifting flexibility away from our site and over to competing retail sites. Uh, tenants such as Tesla, Vinfast, Lucid Motors, Rad Power Bikes, Biden, and other high-end automakers are frequently found in and around malls around the country. These are tenants who are all targets for future redevelopments of our property, whether inside of the mall or part of a redevelopment like the Sears project. With the agreement for all inventory to be contained inside of a building, we believe auto fits just like any other allowed use in pedestrian-oriented development. One could argue that, uh, you know, a luxury auto showroom is much more exciting to walk by and look in a window and see than a window full of jeans or toys. That said, I appreciate your consideration in leaving the Washington Square Mall property part of the sub-district, and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Knudsen. Commissioners, do we have any question? Um, I do have one question, Mr. Knudsen. Um, I wonder if you can comment on whether any dealerships have approached Washington Square Mall to build a dealership? If you, uh, I know you may not be able to comment on that, but if you can, please let us know.
Uh, we, we have, yeah. Um, you know, over the past few years, we had significant interest in the Sears parcel, both where the Sears building sits today and where the Sears auto building sits. Um, a lot of that was because of the freeway visibility that it could have and, and just the location on the mall campus. And, um, as everyone on this call is aware, we chose to move forward with plans for the pedestrian-oriented mixed-use redevelopment that, you know, contains the mix of uses between, uh, entertainment, restaurants, hotel, and, and multifamily. And so, um, we declined, uh, to, to move forward with, with auto there, and no other conversations are being had, um, today.
And also, if, if you, I don't know if you can comment on this, as far as you know, is Wells Fargo still, is Wells Fargo going to keep opening for the foreseeable future? If you can comment on that?
Yes, they are. They just signed a, I believe, five-year extension, um, a year and a half or so ago, so they have, uh, some term left on that lease, yes.
Thank you very much. I don't see, uh, any other commissioner having questions, so thank you. Kealan, do we have any more caller?
We do. We have Rob Walter.
Mr. Walter, please, uh, state your name and spell your last name and state your address, and you have three minutes after that. Thank you.
Yes, it's Rob Walter, W A L T H E R, twelve five oh five Southwest Broadway in Beaverton, Oregon, nine seven oh oh five. I'm the Chief Financial Officer for the Landfair Auto Group and Landfair Motorcycles, and I want to thank the commission for the opportunity to speak tonight and just reaffirms what, uh, Tim Brunner had talked about just a little bit earlier. Uh, Landfair has been a, a member of that community and that location for over 28 years. Uh, Bob Landfair, uh, started, started in business in motorcycles, and it's extremely important to us to continue in the motorcycle business and be able to expand it, uh, which is what this, uh, this change will allow us to do. We waited for many, many years for this opportunity, and we're very excited to move forward with an expansion, which will add, uh, as you mentioned, about 20 to, and or more new positions, new jobs in the Tigard area. And, uh, we're extremely, uh, happy to do that. Uh, these are sustainable family wage jobs. They're not, they're not minimum wage jobs, and, uh, we think we were a value add to the community and being able to expand even, uh, even more so. So again, thank you so much. We would very much like to be a conforming use. And it was mentioned earlier, you know, when you go to finance, when you go to change, uh, things, um, with banks, uh, being a conforming use is in a much stronger position than a non-conforming use, and this would help us. And we, like I said, waited, uh, a long time, so we're anxious to go forward. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Commissioners, do we have any question for Mr. Walter? I see none, so thank you very much. Kealan, do we have any more callers?
No additional callers. Uh, we do have one person in case there are any transportation questions. He did the transportation analysis for one of the other callers.
I'm sorry, so it's a, a public for the question?
He, he's available in case there are questions about the transportation analysis for the Jaguar development.
Oh, okay. Thank you, thank you. Sorry about that. Um, so I, I think that's the, that's the extent of public testimony for now. So I believe, uh, Susan and Lena want an opportunity to respond to anything they heard before we start the elaborations. So go ahead, Susan.
Thank you very much, President Hu, and thank you for, um, all of our, um, all of our testifiers. And, um, I, I believe that we, you know, generally were able to work with many of the different stakeholders involved here. And like I said, the proposal, I feel like that we have brought forward to you, which is, you know, a revised proposal really, uh, does a good job at balancing different, uh, competing interests, um, and in, including the public. And the public is actually like kind of the public in terms of our residents, uh, not being as represented here this evening. So, uh, that's who I kind of want to speak on behalf of. But generally, I'm appreciative of those folks that spoke out. I think we have, you know, really good relationships with all these, uh, people, even, even the ones that, um, have some concerns about the proposal. But I, and, you know, I know that, so John Southgate and, uh, James, uh, Boglioli, they had concerns about the indoor storage. But hopefully, that's not a deal breaker. We think that's really important. We've heard from council in the past when we've done briefings on this subject that that's the direction that they wanted us to go in. Uh, so we're, we're honoring that, and we do think it is kind of, uh, a more modern approach to, um, kind of car dealerships moving forward, uh, as, as the model for changes, uh, with regard to especially electric cars. But I, I really do want to acknowledge, um, the comments that Jacob Knudsen, um, offered from Mace Rich. Um, we have been working with, um, Mace Rich, and it's been, I think, a really great, um, uh, partnership, uh, thus far. And, um, and it, we're, we're saddened that we weren't able to get on the same page, um, at this particular point in time. Initially, um, Mr. Knudsen was okay with the, the sub-district being shrunk, um, but I certainly understand his position in the retail market changing, and, and not even just because of COVID, but certainly because of COVID has also exacerbated changes in the retail, um, market. So I, I really respect the position that he's in and the challenges that, uh, Mace Rich and his business faces. Um, one of the reasons why we could, um, we did not choose to, um, bring forward a proposal, um, consistent with Mr. Knudsen's, um, request of you, is that, um, we had, well, initially, uh, he was in agreement, um, but I understand that things have changed on his side, but, um, that because we went forward to the public with a very specific proposal that they were, we were asking for their input on, we felt like we couldn't justify such a radical departure from what we had asked the public about allowing car dealerships in places that did not have that pedestrian-oriented development potential. So that was one reason, like, we felt like we could not change the proposal that we brought to you. Um, we also are a little, you know, concerned about, um, you know, the service component of a car dealership. Um, that's not an uncommon thing, where you have a car dealership and then you have the accessory use, which is the car servicing component. And even with those, um, uses potentially all being inside a building, the service component potentially brings a lot more auto traffic, uh, not people buying cars that might be walking by when they go to the mall, but auto traffic. And so we're concerned about having that still be a potential kind of anywhere on this property, because that blue area, and Lena, can you show that map again that you were displaying before? That shows the sub-district as it currently stands in blue? So, you know, the blue area is rather large, and, um, to continue to allow that whole area to just allow standalone car dealerships outright, um, just makes us uncomfortable. Uh, it means that a car dealership, a standalone car dealership could show up anywhere. And, and so we wouldn't be able to kind of mod- um, um, respond to the concerns about, um, traffic through the site, um, based on the tools that we have and the development review process that we have. And lastly, we were also a little bit uncomfortable with continuing the blue area to be as large it is, because even if something might, um, if something comes in to play today as allowed by this blue area, um, they, you know, once something is there, it's really difficult for it to go away. And so we just have, you know, concerns over, um, the longevity if a new car dealership came in on this property. So that, those were all the reasons why that we, um, we did not bring that forward as the proposal and, and believe that the, um, the hatched area are the more appropriate locations, um, to locate car dealerships. But, you know, like I said, with all due respect to Mr. Knudsen and the, and the challenges with retail business and how's it, how it's evolving, we just couldn't come to agreement on that. I will say one other thing, uh, for the Commissioners', um, edification, is that, um, even though standalone car, i- if you were to recommend the proposal that we are suggesting, um, car dealerships are actually still allowed on the mall property, but they're allowed as an accessory use. And what that means is that, um, for example, Tesla currently operates in the mall. I don't know if you're aware of that, but Tesla- but Tesla currently has like a sales site, just kind of like any other store is selling something, uh, to the public. And so they're located in the mall. So that use is currently allowed, um, under current regulations, even without this subdistrict. So, um, the mall does still have some flexibility to allow car dealerships, um, that it could include service centers to be located as long as they were like part of the mall itself. Um, so that still is some flexibility that they, um, that they have currently and that we are not proposing to change. So it's really the, um, the idea of a standalone car dealership being the thing that's the question here. And, uh, like I said, we think that the proposal that we have brought to you, um, makes the most sense in that regard. So thank you for that. Um, Tom or Lena, did you have anything else to offer?
Not at this time.
No, I think you covered it. Thank you, Susan.
So thank you, President Hu.
Thank you, Susan. Okay, so Commissioner, I'm going to close, uh, public testimony and, uh, public hearing part of this, uh, this, uh, public hearing. Um, so now it's time for deliberations. Um, I will be interested in hearing your thoughts and which way you are leaning, um, whether you like what you see about the proposed subdistrict or what you don't like about it? And are you willing to make any changes to the subdistrict map in, or, and the screening standard in the, um, memo dated twenty ninth? Commissioner K. Seven, please go ahead.
Well, so, um, I, I like the, uh, proposal. I didn't see anything. So the thing I'm struggling with is what am I missing? Is there something that am I overlooking that, uh, this subdistricting will, will impede us from, uh, as we go forward, right? Because the world is evolving. Thanks to the pandemic, it's evolving at an accelerated rate. We are going along one path and, uh, pretty, in, in two, three years, are we gonna go, oh my goodness, why did we do that kind of a thing? But I can't come up with any reason why we shouldn't do this, right? So that's kind of where my, my head is at this point in time.
Thank you. Commissioner Jackson.
So kind of where I am, um, I'm, I'm still chewing on a lot of kind of new, new information or new perspectives that came up during the hearing because we don't usually have so many people testifying, which was great. Um, so I'm still chewing on some of that. Kind of my, my feeling going into the hearing, just based on the prep and readings was that, you know, overall I'm in, in favor, kind of one, to, to most people, probably kind of minor sticking point is in general, I'm just not a big fan of uh, kind of introducing unnecessary complications into code. And I felt like accommodating some of the sites, uh, seemingly the site to the north and then the Jaguar Land Rover site, um, to make them conforming and having to, you know, carefully word the codes just to accommodate those couple of uses. And then having those uses be there. And as the point was right up, when something's there, it's kind of hard to get rid of it if we need to later. Um, not that I'm saying we want to, but if we needed to, uh, that was kind of my, my sticking point was getting stuck with, uh, overly convoluted code, basically, um, to accommodate a couple of uses. But I think my feeling at the moment is that generally those, both of those cases are pretty well justified. I, I understand and, and hadn't really thought of, just based on the readings, um, the whole, uh, financial aspect of being a non-conforming use, um, on a site. So in general, I'm in favor, well, I was in favor of the original, uh, proposal. I'm also, uh, I believe I'm in favor of the, uh, revised proposal from the twenty ninth.
Thank you. Commissioner Roberts.
I, first of all, this was fascinating. I've learned a lot. Uh, take the points from Commissioner Jackson. I, I'm in favor of the revised version and looking forward to it. I think this is going to be really positive for, for the area, uh, for the, for the people, for the economy. I'm, I'm thinking it's good.
Thank you. Um, while I'm in favor of the additional subs, substrate space to the west of two seventeen in general, I believe that will bring great opportunities to the region. And I also agree that, um, it's not very pedestrian friendly area for future development. Um, for the Jaguar Land Rover, I was on the planning commission when we approved it. So, um, I totally agree that it's, uh, it's so, it's, it's, it's there so recently. So it's unfair to make them, um, non-conforming so quickly. Um, as you may, you might be able to tell from my questioning, my biggest concern is the, the three lots that's, uh, sits current Wells Fargo. Um, um, with due respect to Susan, I still don't see how that's not pedestrian friendly. That's, uh, I, I see great potential for pedestrian oriented development. And, um, I also concerned that there are eighty apartment units up immediately north to it. And while, so while we are telling them is that, you know, we are sticking a car dealership next to affordable housing units. I, I think from equity point of view, I have great concern. Um, you know, there's, as I said, there's a bus stop there, a bus hub there. Um, it's within walking distance to Target and walking a biking distance to several, uh, shop and restaurants. And even further north of that area, um, Washington Square is making it into a pedestrian friendly zone. So I just find it weird to have a car dealership in the middle of that section. And, um, and also Washington Square, um, people also say that Wells Fargo just signed a five year lease there. So that's not going to be a car dealership for five years. And I just don't see why it has to be, um, label or zone for car dealership at this point. So I just think that everything my guts says that, that Washington Square plots, those three land plots should be excluded from the subs district. Um, I just don't know what other people think about that. Commissioner Miranda, you have thoughts?
Yes, thank you. I'd like to agree with you, uh, President Hu about the Wells Fargo parcel. And also want to honor the property owners, um, uh, of the malls, uh, thoughts on, um, limiting all of their uses. And I feel that the property adjacent to the, um, Jaguar, um, place now, um, along two seventeen would be a reasonable swap where I believe, um, Sears Auto Center is now. I mean, I'm not familiar with the entire Sears redevelopment thing. So just from a map perspective, that seems likely. And then, um, just from a personal perspective, I, I don't, I wouldn't mind seeing ten display cars in front, in front of a, in front of a auto place. I like shiny cars and it makes me come in. I'm beautiful BMW buildings. I'm very familiar with their, their new processes of, of how they develop. And I look forward to seeing what they can do. But, um, I, I feel like completely screening their product is a little short sighted, but as the council wishes. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Miranda. Uh, any other thoughts? Commissioner Robert, your hand still up or you forgot to lower it or you have more? Oh, there we go. So, thank you. So do we have any? So Commissioner, are we ready to make a motion? Approve, disapprove, amendment, continuation?
I'd be happy to make a motion.
Okay, so we are, we are, um, making a recommendation to the city council. So please go ahead.
Okay, I move the planning commission forward, a recommendation of approval to city council for the, uh, development code amendment application DCA two zero two one dash zero 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 one. And adoption of the findings of approval. I don't think there are any conditions uh, in, contained in the staff report and based on the testimony received.
And we have a memo, actually the, it's memo dated twenty ninth, that's the latest.
Okay, uh, in, including the memo, uh, based on, and, and based on the memo received dated April twenty ninth.
Okay, so we have motion forward by Commissioner Roberts or submit a recommendation to the city council in DCA twenty twenty one dash zero 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 one, adoption of the findings in the staff report. And the, uh, staff memo dated twenty nine?
Testimony and the staff memo received April twenty nine.
Okay. Do we, do we have any discussion second or?
Um, I'll second it. This is Commissioner Watson.
Commissioner Watson, second it. Um, I actually have a motion to amend that motion, mo- uh, motion if, uh, you will entertain that. Um, let's see. So I move to amend Commissioner Roberts', uh, motion to reboot three properties identified with tax lot ID number one S one two six C B zero zero two zero zero, three zero zero and four zero zero, which are the three, um, lots, uh, where the Wells Fargo bank is currently sitting in the staff memorandum dated April twenty nine, twenty twenty one from the subs district. Do we have any discussion?
No, I'm okay with that amendment. If, if, uh, yeah, you, you made a lot of sense when you, when you presented your, uh, point of view. So I'm okay with the amendment.
Are you willing to second it, Commissioner K. Seven?
Shh, sure. I second it.
Okay, so so we will be voting on the, my amendment to Commissioner's Roberts', uh, motion first. So the amendment is to remove, uh, Wells Fargo, um, property, the three lots from the subs, some of the subs, subs district overlay. And it was second by Commissioner K. Seven. So I give you a second. If you support that amendment, please raise your hand for five seconds. Okay, those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. So please keep your hands up. So it's support by Commissioner Hu, Commissioner K. Seven, Commissioner Q. Nones, Commissioner Jackson, Commissioner Whitehurst and Commissioner Roberts. So one, two, three, four, five, six. So it's six. And those, so please lower, lower, lower your hand. Those opposed, please raise your hand. Those opposed, please say nay.
Nay.
So Commissioner, Commissioner Watson opposed, uh, um, motion to amend. So the motion to amend passes six to one. So, um, let's go back to Commissioner Roberts' mo- original motion. So that was, uh, second by, I forgot who seconded that.
Commissioner Watson.
Okay, thank you. So those in favor, um, I give you five seconds to raise your hand. So this, just to be clear, voting for this motion will also include my amendment. So those, those, those in favor, please say aye.
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 Aye. So I see seven hands, so it passes unanimously. All right, please lower your hand. So thank you so much for, um, everybody for, for the hearing. And the city council is scheduled to hear this case on June first. Thank you. All right, so let's move on. Sorry for the, we're way behind. Sorry about that, Monica. So next one, we'll go right into public hearing. For next case, it's a Fennel Creek Trail Connections, CPA twenty twenty one dash zero 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 one, CUP twenty twenty one dash zero 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 two and SCR twenty twenty one dash zero 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 one. So in partnership with the Oregon Department of Transportation, the city is proposing to have, to build three section of the Fennel Creek Trail and improvement to an existing, um, fourth section of the trail. So, um, without further delay, that's a, let me introduce, uh, staff associate planner Monica Billadu to, uh, present her staff report. Good evening. Monica, please start.
Hi, good evening. Can everybody hear me?
Yes.
Great. Let me get up my presentation. Okay, good evening, President Hu. My name is Monica Billadu. And the next item is this Fennel Creek Trail Connections. So a little quick summary, the city of Tigard, as you said, in partnership with the Oregon Department of Transportation is requesting a comprehensive plan amendment to remove approximately one point one three acres of Tigard significant wetlands from the Wetland and Stream Corridor map to accommodate this installation of these four trail sections. So right here I have a project summary of those four sections. Uh, three are, will be new and the fourth will be improvements, uh, to an existing path section um, behind City Hall, the Ash to Hall Boulevard. So I have a few. So this is kind of an overall graphic, um, of the sections within our jurisdiction here. So the first one, and here I have an aerial, um, I thought this would be good to look at. This is the Woodard Park to Grant Avenue, the, the section, the connection there. And then this is the, uh, behind City Hall. So this is the improvements, um, portion from the existing path to Ash Avenue East to Hall Boulevard. And then this is the library to Milton Court. And then this also shows some of the, um, mitigation and enhancement areas. And then this is the Clean Water Services, uh, the eighty fifth avenue to the Kia Cuts Bridge. So I thought this was good to see the kind of aerials, um, but kind of an overview, there, uh, a conditional use is required and a sensitive lands re- review is also required. Um, because a portion of the trail goes through residentially zoned property. Um, that triggered the conditional use that is before you. And then finally, the sensitive lands review, um, we also needed because we were going to impact, um, some portions of the vegetated corridor. And we had a FEMA floodway and some steep slopes. So those are all included in the findings before you. So the project need, um, as many, I hope you know that this trail is, uh, very important in our community. Um, and it's going to be roughly one point four miles of new and updated path. Um, that's going to be designed and constructed in accordance with the regional, state and national standards. Um, the project will The project will install roughly, it'll be twelve foot wide paved path with one foot wide shoulders, except for specific areas that are within the environment that have environmental constraints. And those will be narrower to reduce those impacts. So the project will also construct two um fourteen foot wide bridges over Fano Creek and elevated boardwalks as needed over the wetlands. So this is um Metro's a regional trail under their transportation and pedestrian plan and bicycle networks. And the path is also critical for infrastructure that serves as dual purpose, fulfilling both transportation and recreation needs in our community and in the region. So the new path sections, I think most importantly in our analysis, is also going to provide controlled access. So it's going to limit the introduction of rogue paths and potential more impacts to wetlands, which is common along several sections of the Fano Creek Trail. So as part of the requirement in the comprehensive plan amendment, it removes protection over, like I said, over a combined one point three acres of Tiger's significant wetlands. And in order to process the amendment, um and envir- an ESE analysis is required. And it's basically goes over environmental, social and economic and energy analysis. Um, and this is very important to this comprehensive plan amendment. And we've included this E and ESE analysis as part of the staff report for your review. But ultimately, just a quick overview. The goal five ESE analysis involves evaluating the trade offs associated with different levels of natural resource protection. So it evaluates, it basically identifying the consequences of allowing, limiting and prohibiting the conflicting uses to this natural resource. So it went through each of those scenarios very closely. And ultimately, the analysis concluded that limiting the conflicting use was going to be the best alternative and have the most beneficial consequences for the city. So that that is the results of that analysis included for your review. Also, I think good to note that's included in this proposal and kind of package as a whole is the mitigation that's proposed. They've included a purchase of point three acres of wetland credits from the Butler Mitigation Bank, which is just west, um a little less than two miles west of the Tiger's city limits. And then kind of a bigger picture is there's almost nine and a half acres of enhancement that's proposed within our city limits within Tigard um to existing Riparian and Upland Forest that will mitigate a much smaller amount of impact that's being proposed by this project. Um, and then also in addition, there what's proposed is one point two acres of plantings for all the temporary impacts associated with constructing the uh it it impacts to like vegetated corridor when they're constructing the trail, they're also. So that's a considerable amount of mitigation that's being proposed with this package. So ultimately, staff recommends approval tonight of this comprehensive plan amendment, conditional use and sensitive lands review, um subject to the findings and recommended conditions in the staff report. So because this is a um a comprehensive plan amendment, we are tonight, we need the planning commission to provide a recommendation to City Council. And the City Council hearing will be on June first. So we are asking for your recommendation tonight. And that includes my presentation and I'm available to answer any questions. And the applicant, which is also a city staff, is here to present as well.
Thank you, Monica. Um, I saw another person jumping out earlier. Was that person going to present as well?
We have two of us here. I'm I'm a I'm Carla Stetter. I'm I'm a project manager with the engineering department. Um, the this tra- or this project is so large, we generally run two PMs on it. And so my um my colleague is also sitting in on the discussion.
Okay, thank you. All right, so. Hi, Tom.
Hi, just wanted to make sure if we knew that they're even though they're city employees, they're actually the applicant in this quasi judicial case, so if the if I let you go on, if that's where you were going, but the if the commission has questions for staff.
Right, that's yes, that's where I'm going next. So commissioners, do we have any question for the applicant and the staff?
We do have a presentation prepared if you would like to would like to see that.
Okay, let's go to the question first. Um, Commissioner K seven, please go ahead with your question.
Hi, um Monica, thank you. This is long overdue because I I frequently use the trail, so I'm very happy to see this coming through, especially the Woodward Park where I have to walk on the road now to get to Grant. Thank you for proposing to fix that, so um the the fundamental. Second question I have is, you know, you mentioned there is a bridge across Fano Creek and whenever we talk about Fano Creek, I always get nervous because Fano always floods one thing or the other. Are we going to make sure that the bridge is at a higher high enough elevation? The prospects of flooding and closure of the trail, et cetera, doesn't happen going forward. You know, if you have, for example, on the Beaverton side, they've done a pretty good job of adding a bridge that is pretty high enough and the trail kind of gradually climbs up to that bridge. So now the the Fano is way below the bridge, so chances of that bridge flooding is way is almost zero, I would say.
Would you like me to take this one, Monica?
Yeah, you can provide probably the best analysis, yeah, the best answer.
Thank you.
So the answer is that um that we would have, in order to um to to ensure that the bridge would or that any of these bridges would not flood, they would have had to be hung up in the air ridiculously high to the to the point where we would have been unable to meet ADA requirements to get up and down them. So we will we will see it some flooding of these structures. It's it, I believe it's does uh designed for the for the two to five year storm. But it varies from from each of the structures. And so so we would love to have have been able to do that. But we are down lower in the basin than Beaverton and and so our flood elevations are considerably higher.
Thank you.
Commissioner Jackson, please go go ahead.
Um, I just had a general question about the the regional trail, so I understand that the the overall goal is to reach all the way down to the Twalton River. With this proposal, it looks like we get basically as far as Bonita, and then there's kind of a break, and then there's that southern portion. Is there a longer term vision for how those connect or is it just going to always rely on uh, you know, street pet and bike connections?
Um, I can take that one too, Monica. Um, Zach Morris, who's also on the phone call here, is is just completing a siting study for the trail, um a siting and a feasibility study from Bonita to that will connect up to the to the eighty fifth trail that should be wrapped up within the next month or two. And um so there is a vision for that. It's it's been through a number of rounds of of requests for public input. And um so we will know what it's going to take and what the public wants for that connection there.
Thank you.
Thank you. Carla or Monica, I have a question. So like Commissioner K seven, I'm very excited for this because I I went by that Durham section almost daily with my dog, and I'm very excited to see another pathway there. So just follow up on your your comment a little bit earlier about being flooded, designed for flood. So for the Durham section, um at the south end of it, before you undergo under underneath the train, train, train track at the southern end of the Durham Trail, it floods like two or three weeks a year. So according to your calculation, I do you expect that that section of trail to be flooded? Often, also two to three weeks a year, is that the design goal, pro- design goal at the end?
I I don't believe it will happen as frequently because if you look at, as you get closer to the river and the and the grades drop off, the area that you're looking at is uh is closer to the floodplain of the Twalton. So um I think one of the things I'd like to share is we do get a lot of public comments about about flooding of the trail. What what we want to work on in a future project is to start to turn the public's view of that around. The only allowed use in the floodplain is is a trail. And um and so what we what we have to realize is it brings it brings great things with it. It also brings challenges. And the fact the fact is that some of these structures are going to flood. And I think that we can we can message to the public that that this is an exciting thing. You're entering the floodplain. When the floodplain's not busy, it can it can reach, you know, it can serve your needs. It can give you access to nature. When it is busy, it's keeping your house from flooding. It's taking care of water quality, keeping our streams healthy. And so I think that um that looking at flooding of the trail differently and also um future messaging should address that, so people understand uh the the big gift that we have, but it does come at a little bit of a of a of a cost.
Yeah, totally agree. And and I am I'm excited that I would not have to go on one of those rogue trail Monica mentioned. I don't do it very often, but once in a while. So, all right, Commissioner. Any more questions? All right, so let's see, we have any public testimony. So member of public, if you want to provide any testimony, the time to call in is now. And the number is five zero three nine six six four one zero one. Five zero three nine six six four one zero one. Kealan, do we have any caller for this hearing?
There are currently no callers.
Since there's no, since we're very behind, so I don't think anybody will be late for this. I'm more, I'm actually more excited about this hearing than the first one. No offense to Susan and Lena. But this is more much more exciting to me, so um so.
I didn't want to introduce it that way, but I thought about that.
Our dealership or walking trail, I don't know. Anyway, um, thank you so much. I don't think the Commissioner has any more question for you, so thank you so much for your presentation. Oh, wait, Commissioner Jackson, one more question, go ahead.
Sorry, I had one more quick question specifically about the the library to Milton Court section. So I was I was digging through maps of the trail online because I'm not incredibly familiar with it myself. But um as far as I understand it, there are some other existing trails that connect through to, is it Fano Creek Drive? Does that sound correct?
Yes, you're you are correct. There is a um, there is a trail that drops south, Colony Creek Trail that drops south from the library on the other side of of Fano Creek.
So I I'm I I think I probably know the answer to this question, but was was that route looked at rather than cutting through more of the green space to get to Milton Court, or are there a lot more rogue rogue trails through Milton Court?
Yes, that that was looked at. Um, it's so um what we're building here or at at least what our funding is driving is a transportation corridor. We do just for your information have another project in tandem with this called Fano Creek Trail amenities. But because this project is very expensive, we have to go after federal money and and so the federal money carries with it the viewpoint that this is a transportation corridor. That corridor doesn't lend itself well to serve the um to serve the commuting traffic piece. It has a lot of tight turns. Um, our design standards would be turns, you know, less than a seventy five degree radius. And so that's why that's why it doesn't follow that route.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Jackson. Any more questions? I see none, so thank you, Carla. Thank you, Monica. That's Commissioner, that's going to deliberation. I'm closing the public hearings um or public testimony part. So commissioners, deliberation. Are you excited or are you excited? Comments? Suggestions? Commissioner Jackson, go ahead.
So as my as my question probably led on, my only real concern going in was I was a little concerned about the disruption to the natural area for the library portion. I I understand that there are probably very good reasons to do that, but that was kind of my one concern going in. But overall, I mean, all the other portions, I was very much in support of beforehand and overall in in support.
Well, I can give you a reason to feel a little bit better about it. So so through that area, there's a beautiful um oak woodland with a camus meadow under it. And um and the trail was sighted, we went and flagged all of the significant oaks, the trail was sighted between that. All of the all of the um the shoulders that go through that area are going to be vegetated so that, you know, to to provide less impact to that area. It also provides us an opportunity to partner with Clean Water Services and Metro and to do interpretation of that area. The camus field is a very important plant to the Native Americans in the area. So and then it it um it also provides, we're doing a study for the Red Rock Creek Trail. And it also, um by having the trail over there allows us potentially uh better future access to hook up a trail that goes along Red Rock Creek up into the triangle.
Thank you. So I'm my personal feeling is I'm very excited about this project and I'm very happy to see the default path width is twelve foot. Um, I think um right now, as the trail getting busier, I found that a lot of bicyclists are not really uh observing biking etiquette, so I think getting a wider pathway will make that situation better. And um I'm also very excited to hear like Carla mentioned that uh the the potential for flooding will decrease. And I'm looking forward to that for regular regular path. So um I'm fully support this uh trail project and I can't wait to see it finished. So Commissioner, do we have a motion? We are making a recommendation to the um city council and they are conditioned for approval. Commissioner Roberts, you want to give this a try again?
Sure, um, so this is going to the council, so I'm moving that the planning commission forward a recommendation of approval to the city council for the applications, the comprehensive plan amendment CPA two zero two one dash zero 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 one, the conditional use permit CUP two zero two one dash zero 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 two and sensitive lands review SLR two zero two one dash zero 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 one. Uh, and adoption of the findings of approval contained in the staff report and based on the testimony received.
Thank you. Very well done.
Chucks.
So commissioners, Commissioner Roberts for a motion to that we recommend the approval of the application number mentioned in the Fano Creek Trail Connections project and um adoption of the finding and condition approval. and adoption of the finding and condition approval contained in the staff report and based on the testimony received. Do we have a second?
I second, this is K. Seven.
Thank you, Commissioner K. Seven, second Commissioner Roberts motion. So do we have any discussion or amendment questions? Nope, okay. So I'm going to give you five seconds to raise your hand if you are in support of this motion. Okay, those in favor of the motion say aye, please.
Aye.
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 Thank you very much. I see seven hands raising, so that's unanimous passage. Thank you so much, everybody, it passed. And as Monica mentioned, the city council is scheduled to take up a hearing on June 1st. Thank you, Carla, thank you, Monica. The hearing is closed.
Thank you, good night.
Good night. All right, so we are done with our public hearing. And the next item on the agenda is other business. And I see Tom popping up, so Tom.
I don't have any other business tonight. I think we've, we've run late and I don't, unless I would open it up to questions of commissioners, but I don't have any specific other business. We, this is our only meet, one and only meeting this month. So we get a little bit of a break and we'll be back again in, in June. And we have their whole variety of quasi judicial and legislative cases coming your way. So are there questions?
Commissioner Jackson.
I had kind of a process question. So, so in my time here, sometimes we've had it so that after, so we have the, the staff presentation, applicant presentation. And sometimes we've allowed questions to staff after the applicant presentation, just before we go into deliberations. Sometimes we don't. I didn't know what the standard was and if there's a preference among commissioners, which way we did it.
Well, yeah, the, and are you talking about the quasi judicial hearing or the legislative hearing?
I guess I'm mainly thinking quasi judicial, but I suppose it could apply to either.
Quasi judicial is, is, should be a pretty strict. We're a little lax tonight because it was a city project, I think. But it, it should be a pretty strictly staff report, applicant presentation. And then you can ask questions of staff after the staff report. You can ask questions of the applicant during their, or after their presentation. Then any public comment. And, you know, you can ask questions of the public. And then, yes, there's the follow up to the staff for staff rebuttal and follow up to the applicant gets final rebuttal both prior to deliberations. And then, once deliberations start, if there's questions, you can ask technical questions of staff.
So, so I guess just going out on a limb, my preference would be if we just be sure to call out any final questions to staff before deliberations. It's kind of been my feeling that in some of our recent quasi judicial hearings, I feel like we kind of front load a lot of questions before we've even heard the applicant side of the presentation. And I think it's maybe because we're worried we won't get to ask them later. At least that's how I've felt in a few hearings. So that would be my two cents.
Thank you, I would, I would take, I would take that into consideration. I, I have feeling, I, I was feeling that I would ask, I give the commissioner plenty of opportunity to ask questions. But I, I guess I will, I will make, I will make sure that I ask them even more often in the future, so.
Yes, it's, for me, I think it's not so much the more often, it's just, just that last chance right before deliberations that sometimes I feel like we maybe lose.
Yeah, and feel free to raise your hand if you, if you have questions then, then.
Sure.
I definitely can catch them, so.
Thanks.
Thank you.
I think it also tends to be easier when we're in the, in the hearing room together. So.
Absolutely.
This circumstance, it's, yeah, gets a little crazy.
I have Commissioner K. Seven first and then Commissioner Watson.
So speaking of being in the room, is that going to happen anytime soon, Tom?
No, with the county and parts of Oregon, you know, ramping up again. I'm not hearing any discussion about that. City council is not talking about holding in-person hearings. It's not going to happen until the county's daily case number get down below the governor's threshold. And then the leadership team and the city council have those discussions about when they want us begin in-person meetings again. So.
Okay.
Not going to be for a while.
All right, okay, thank you.
Jamie, you have a comment or question?
Oh, no, K. Seven beat me to it, so no worries.
Sorry, Jamie.
All right, question was answered, that's the important part.
Three minds think alike. Commissioner Miranda.
It's a similar, my question is answered, but just any ideas if, if and when we do come back to a real life place, if it would be hybrid or in-person only. Because, you know, I might have on pajama pants.
That's a good question and that's being debated in a lot of different places right now. So I, the answer is I don't know. I know there's a bill in the legislature, in the legislature to make it required that cities and counties, as we come back post-COVID pandemic, we, we have both in-person and digital online options available. I don't know whether that law is going to pass or not. There's a lot, there's just a lot of issues around it and a lot of thinking that has to go on yet, I think, before we get it worked out. But I know our communications team is thinking about it. And I imagine that will be very much part of the leadership team and city council's discussion. Okay.
All right, I guess if there's nothing further, I'm going to declare the meeting adjourned. Thank you, everybody, for your service and have a good night.
Thank you, you too.
Have a good night. Good night, good night.
Good night.